I ask you to join us with the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance to flag the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We have a number of issues to tackle this evening. The first of which is on the agenda is open time for the public. No one raises their hand when you shall. Oh, you got it?
I got it.
Nope. Sorry. So that's good. Yeah, I got one. I got a pencil.
Thanks.
I don't know if there's any living. We have a payroll warrant.
All right, I'll do that first.
Do that while we... Everybody needs comfort outside, I'm stocked up tonight.
Actually, it's a bill warrant.
Bill. It says payroll, there. Okay.
Bill warrant, W 11-39.
Uh, nope. I think you have the wrong agenda.
It's the loose one.
It's the loose one.
Oh, it's the loose one.
Good.
Sorry. Let's start again. Um, yes, thank you. Payroll warrant, number P 11-40, for a total amount of $224,634.3.
So move to pay. Second. On paper.
Aye.
It looks like we have four minutes to fill. This is, we have some minutes, I believe.
Yep.
The one I see is February 15th, the earliest one.
March, February 15th.
Is that where you want to start, then?
That's the furthest back in my package, if that's okay.
Yeah, I was absent, so I'll be quiet.
They have you there.
Yeah, actually, you're listed, you and David are both places, yeah. Do you recall whether, I believe you were here, but I don't, uh...
What was that?
Well, maybe they both weren't here.
No, I think they, neither one were here.
Yeah, I agree.
Diana, while we've got this, Diana, did we hear anything from Northeast Utility in regard to the streetlights?
Yes.
Oh, we did?
Yeah, it's on my, um, I think it's on my administrator report, but yes, we did. Uh, let me just see if it's on there, if not, I'll just update you. Um, okay, yeah, I didn't, we, they want to have a meeting. So I had, they had intended to have that during the day, but I wrote them back and asked if we could do it, just have them come to a selectman's meeting. So they have the, they have the inventory done, um, and they have a cost estimate, but they want to go over the estimate.
Yeah, East Hampton just got a huge grant to convert to LED the whole time. So that's, you know, really nice.
Yep, so we'll have them on the agenda, probably the early part of April.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Looks like there were very few motions that night.
Make a motion to approve the minutes of February 15th.
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Moving on to February 22nd. Well, we got to make that correction, that David and Jess were not present.
Okay, yes.
Jess must have abstained, I would think.
I did, right, just now.
And I was absent for the 22nd. Uh, that was vacation.
Make a motion to accept the minutes of February 22nd.
Second.
I will call for the vote, but not vote. All in favor?
Aye.
I abstained, I wasn't present. And then we have March 8th. Wow, we're getting caught up. We had this police officer in, we had department head meeting. We had the issue of the assessors renting the vehicle, voting booths. Uh, I think the issue's been decided.
Is it?
Didn't we, where were we that we talked to Eileen, and she said the booths are...
She was here, and they're going to put them out in the hall, I thought.
No, we were going to put them on these two walls, you voted to allow her to do that. We had some folks working on it, but it hadn't, it hasn't really moved along, so we're still, we might still get some carpenters, talk to some carpenters, but, but we're, we're still working on it. We're, they're here now. I think Mr. Randcourt helped to get them over here, but now they, yeah, they just have to be prepped and mounted, basically.
But they've got to be done by May...
May 3rd. May 2nd. Yep.
Great. Make a motion to accept the minutes of March 8th.
Is that the second?
Second, please.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Excerment. And we are now a minute late for Charter Communications. Good evening.
Good evening.
Um, I think the board has had the benefit of a letter from Kopelman and Page on March 22nd, and further communications, uh, some emails from town council on February 28th, estimated bill from town council, uh, the estimated bill which did not include this evening was $23.79, and how does the board wish to proceed? We have before us the issue of, oh, and there's a letter, I'm sorry, from Mr. Cohen, which I had in my office, but I don't see.
That's on one.
Um, Diana, I don't have that, that's what I was asking. We had, we all had them, and I just left mine behind.
Okay.
We had a letter from Mr. Cohen dated March 23rd. I say Mr. Cohen. No, it's from Gregory Garibidi, I'm sorry, I was referring to you. Letter dated March 23rd, which obviously should get made part of the, this file. If you have a problem if I paraphrase this, and...
Go right ahead.
All right. Charter was here, they appreciate that the license expired in 2007, continue to operate under the old contract. At hearing, both parties made known their interpretation of the language of the old license. Charter believes they did not violate any express provisions in that contract. Uh, that hearing surfaced more fundamental issues, building a partnership of trust and fair dealing. Uh, Charter wants to do the right thing. Uh, it is, I'm trying to find something meaty. Um, Charter decided not to proceed if they found this, I mean, correct, okay. This, wait a minute, where am I?
I'm just...
It is, yeah, maybe, customers want, and page two. Our commitment to our communities is just as important to us. It is in that spirit and in the interest of putting the issue to rest that we prepared to provide each affected homeowner who has identified or participated in the hearing of March 15th, a credit on their Charter monthly service bill for full amount of construction costs paid out of pocket prior to that date. Additionally, for those residents participating in the hearing who, prior to March 15th, received a survey from Charter but decided not to proceed because they found the estimate to provide cable service cost prohibitive, Charter will agree to install cable television service at that home without charge. I have attached as Exhibit A, a complete list of homeowners affected by this offer. Uh, this offer is being made as a good faith effort to bring this default proceeding to an amicable conclusion, and is contingent upon affirmation by the board as issuing authority that this constitutes a full cure of any allegations of default made by the board, as issuing authority in his letter of December 14th, 2011. Moreover, in order to avoid any further in conflict or ambiguity in expired license, Charter requests that the board, for its designated, enter into a good faith negotiation with intent to finalize a renewal license within 90 days, and that, among other things, clarify standard installations and contributions in aid of construction. I assume that means in, for homes further off than the senior.
Correct.
If despite this offer, the selectmen vote to declare Charter in default, then Charter respectfully rescinds this offer. Upon review and agreement, the board selects process to draft a settlement letter, so forth. And Exhibit A lists, by the way, four homeowners to receive credit, and three homeowners to receive service.
Could you name those, please?
Sure. Well, I don't have a name, well, I guess we have names. Southampton residents to receive credit are Swanson, Whitley, Bellicky, and Tallyky, as that might rhyme. And then Southampton residents to receive construction would be Grinelli, Fink, Johnson. How do you want to proceed?
Yeah, I, I, I heard of this letter last week, and the whole deal's off, that offer, if we come to the conclusion they're in default. So what I would like to do is put this aside and negotiate a contract that's fair to both parties.
Well, when you say contract, do you mean a renewal contract or resolution of this problem?
I'd say a renewal contract, or a renewal agreement. Because I don't think we want to do anything in haste, and I, I think we have a good, fair offer for those people that were allegedly wrong, I'll just use that term, and came forth. Why don't we see what we can do for an agreement between both parties before we say yes or no, we feel you're in violation? Anybody else?
Can we do that with an uncured allegation of default? I'm sorry, is it a...
That would not be a breach, an event of default, to negotiate a new contract in replacement? Do we have to arrive at a default or not?
No, you can, you can proceed as Mr. Blant, and leave the default issue in abeyance for a later determination. You can do that.
Table it for now.
Table it for now, you have that power.
I, I think that would be best for all parties, I honestly don't think. I, I, go ahead.
I, um, I appreciated the letter that came from Charter, willing to make residents whole, that it showed up at, at least one, maybe two hearings, in terms of compensation. Um, and the fact that we need to write a new contract and a new agreement, to start fresh and make sure all the standards and expectations are clear on both sides, I'm kind of willing to go in that kind of trustful negotiation feeling.
I would generally support what Selectman Roy is saying, select person, Roy. I get it right, yeah. If I had any concerns, it would be, clearly Charter is a business, and is in business to provide a return for its stakeholders, so I think that, to the extent there would be some, in any agreement that we come to, not the contract, but this alleged event of, alleged default, that there be a good faith promise made to not attempt to reclaim these charges in some other way.
If I may speak for a moment, here's my take on it. I, Charter asked that in lieu of finding them in default, they settle this matter, which I would agree to do, that part, and I think we ought to resolve the default now, leave the contract to come wherever it does, because the problem becomes, and it works to Charter's advantage or disadvantage, our default, by our recollection and their admission of our letter, is December 14th of 2011. Under the liquidated damages clause, that would keep clicking on and on and on, and right now it would be $9,000, so I think we'd be, for all parties involved, we'd be better off to resolve the default, the alleged default, and then move on as Charter requested within 90 days to a contract, or at least an effort.
There are two separate pieces to the liquidated damages also, so that would increase as another increment in there. As I recall reading, two different sections, yes, in the, in the letter you sent to Charter on December the 22nd, there are allegations that two separate sections of the license were breached, section 3.2 and 4.1, I believe they were, so, yes, two sections, $50 a day for each.
May I ask a question, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Could we, if mutually agreed by both parties, table this issue now and go forward to an agreement? And then we'll come back to this.
To the default.
Yes. In other words, table the default from now.
I mean, temporarily.
Temporarily, and hold any added damages from this date on.
The only comment I see with that is that if we get to, if we go to the end, and we don't arrive at a satisfactory conclusion, then what do you do, you know, are you going to say, we waived the damages, or we stayed the damages? Here, here would be my proposal, and we'll hear from Charter in a minute, but, one, they do as they said, they connect the people who said, and they refund those who they owe. I would like to see them pay our attorney's fees for the default, and I would like to see that that, the charges that are made to the people that they're going to connect or will refund money to are not passed through to the regular consumers.
Yeah, as I say.
And if that satisfied Charter and us, then we would waive the default and move on to the contract.
So put the agreement up front.
Resolve, resolve the default with a settlement, nobody admitting anything, simply getting the town whole in the, in the structure of things, and then saying to Charter, we will work out a contract, 90 days for municipality may be optimistic, especially us, to get a contract negotiated this complex. But then again, we're not reinventing the wheel, we're going to probably take the old contract and...
There's, there's been a draft that, that I had at the November 30th meeting, and updated it based upon the comments at that meeting, and sent to your attorney three days later. So there, there is a pretty complete draft.
So we may not have to do very much.
And, and I don't think you need to do what, what Selectman McDougal suggested last time, is find three volunteers to be on a cable committee.
Oh.
We might wait a long time for that.
Yes. Well, we could maybe draw from the seven names we have.
Would you support that, Mr. Chair, that you've outlined, which would be some good faith effort, not effort, but good faith representation on the part of Charter, that they would not seek to recover those specific charges through any other means, and similarly, that they would compensate us for our attorney's fees to date, which are approximately $23.80, $23.90, plus...
Plus the night. Which, the town council is estimated to be in round numbers $2,500.
I would be in support of that.
There are no lawyers.
Oh, wasn't there any? There are no lawyers present at this table. Um, Mr. Town Council, do you have any problems with our proposal?
I do not, Mr. Chairman, and, uh, no, I do not.
So our proposal at this point in time is to waive the default under those three conditions.
Could you name the three conditions again?
Supplying services and/or refunds to the town residents that have either paid or are in need of service, paying our town council fees of approximately $2,500.
To include tonight.
That includes tonight, roughly, and to waive, and, and we'd ask that any charges that are incurred for those seven residents is not be passed through to the normal rate payers, if that's the right word, the regular rate payers.
Any other rate payers in the town?
That's probably fine with us, I might have to take that back, but, but I want to clarify something, that it's not my understanding that we are currently subject to liquidated damages for the last several months.
Well, we would waive any claim to liquidated damages as part of that settlement agreement. Because I think there's a disagreement whether or not we could or could not recover those, and in the spirit of that, in recovering our attorney's fees and the other expenses, we would waive those.
If, if, if I can get back to you tomorrow?
We would not have another meeting until next Tuesday night, so we would not be able to, if you accept our proposal, we would not be able to finalize it until next Tuesday night.
Then I will accept the proposal.
Does anybody want to put that to a vote?
Yes, I move that we present to Charter formally, the Select Board of Southampton's proposal, one which is to waive any allegations of default, two, receive from Charter the, our attorney's fees with respect to this matter, three, receive from Charter their written agreement to not attempt to collect these charges from any party in this town, and four, to compensate those people who were charged in this aid of construction effort.
And to supply service to those who...
Four A would be to supply services to those who fall under that similar pattern. Does that make sense from a wording perspective? Yes, it, it does, it's very clear to me, Mr. Cohen, you understand?
Could I ask for one addition, which is a commitment to negotiate a renewal in a reasonable period of time?
Reasonable, absolutely. Reasonable period of time being the operative word.
We're ready to go.
Have a second bet?
Any further discussion?
No.
Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Matter is resolved.
Thank you very much, we, we very much look forward to restoring the trust and good relations with, with not just the town, but with the, with the residents who've, who've felt aggrieved by us in the past, so, we're looking forward to a renewal license and continuing to serve the residents of Southampton.
Thank you, Mr. Cohen.
Thank you.
One quick thing, if I may, Mr. Cohen, too, I've been, in my driving around lately, I've seen just a tremendous amount of billboards from yourselves on that free speed increase.
We, we are quite proud that we're increasing the speeds of our internet, and I have to say that, um, that, that the internet penetration in Southampton is as high as it is in any community, which is, I think particularly noteworthy and important, because you can drive five, 10 minutes west of here, and you'll find towns that don't have broadband or cable TV, and there's 40 of these towns in Western Mass. Though this is a small town, you've got a state-of-the-art cable, television, and broadband system.
All right, uh, issues over. Mr. Cohen, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman, would you like me to draft a proposed written agreement to incorporate the, the terms the agreement reached tonight?
Yes.
And then also, as Mr. Cohen said, I'm ready to start working on a renewal license with him as soon as you authorize me to do so.
Move to honor.
Move that we authorize town council to continue working on the draft contract that's...
All in favor?
Aye.
And I will report to you regularly.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Thank you for your time. It's very been a pleasure, thank you.
Gentlemen? Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you, sir.
We have your help, thank you. Thank you.
How the chickens do.
Good, 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 good. Thank you very much. Take my shirt, please. Thank you. You're welcome.
Thank you. See you again, and we'll be in touch. Nice to meet you.
Thank you. Thank you. Good night, everyone.
Good night.
Good night.
Drive carefully.
Should ask for more. Good night, everyone. Good night. Safe trip back. Um... Is that okay?
Yeah, yeah.
Soon as you get Jess back, could I do that?
What'd you say, Dan?
He wants to talk.
Jess, oh, can we see her?
I haven't signed it without...
Ladies and gentlemen, and fellow selectmen, the reason I asked to table that, and to go into negotiations, is I thought it would give us a tremendous upper hand. These people did not want it to fall against them in the public eyes. Bad, very, very bad. I thought this would give us a tremendous upper hand, that's why I did that. But I'll certainly go along with the select board and so forth, but that's why I did what I did. I thought it would put us right in the driver's seat, so, so be it.
Done?
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir. Um, payroll warrant, bill warrant, PCF, R, PRFs, nothing this time?
Actually, you do have some there with the finance committee. Bob wanted me to just let him know when you guys were done, so let me go tell them and...
All right, so why don't we just, we'll keep moving along.
Okay, I'll be right back.
Other business, upcoming events, we got April 5th, I don't know whether you saw the agenda for April 5th, it was on an email somewhere, it's extensive.
April 5th.
It was an email. 12th and 19th, I don't recall.
April 5th.
Yeah. Um, there was a lot of stuff on April 5th. Yeah, there's more. We have the department head meeting that night, we have budgets, we have capital improvement, we have the assessor's issue coming back about mileage for her car. Jess, did I ask you about that chart?
Yeah, it's fine, it was public information in a public session.
I didn't want to pass that out until, until you had given permission on that.
That's all on the 5th?
Yeah. Energy audit, and the committee handbook. I don't know whether the committee handbook's going to get, going to get to that, but, all right? Um, so, that's that one, and then the 12th. The meetings between now and town meeting are packed, we have to start doing a better schedule with finance to go over the budget for presentation to the town, town meeting.
Are we not having the 26th?
I don't think we're, I, I would think we are, not, it's just not scheduled yet. I would think we will. Um, I'm hoping that we can get a balanced budget in there. Okay, and so that's that. Keep moving along, discussion items, Charter communications, we kind of did that one already. Timber cutting, we don't have any updates. You've, you've all seen the emails going back and forth, I trust, on the...
Yes.
On the town hall. Everybody's finger pointing, if you want my opinion. Um, and that takes care of the ones I'm familiar with. Uh, is there anything else attached to our...
Just one thing would be Diana's review that I passed out last...
Oh, I have my thing here. I did my...
Thank you.
I was going to do mine now.
Doug gave me his.
I have it.
That's all right, yeah. And also, I'm going to be sending out an addendum to that, too, with some different types of questions for next time.
What, coming, I mean...
Yeah. Oh, and one small issue that, that's come up is, um, the administrative assistant has gone over her hours, and we asked for, I think Diana asked for a transfer on one issue, but we're continuing to mount hours. I told Diana that she's got to tell her that she can't walk, she can't go over, because our budgets. You know, we had the initial move, she was very intimately involved in the move and everything, and she ate up hours doing that. But we can't, can't preach to the, to the town that we, they got to stay within their budget if we can't stay within our own.
True.
So, I told Diana to tell her that she can't work over anymore. That being said, we're on a hiatus until the finance committee comes down.
We had an administrator's report, do we not?
Yeah, and I don't know what she's got to say.
Two things here, Mike, the chairman, there's one page towards the back, it's the second from the back. Risk control service visitor, tribal workers comp.
They came in and did a, uh, an audit, so to speak, of, of risk and, on management on, on, uh... Oops. On, uh, workers comp. And it looks like, from what Diana tells me, we did okay, they were just, we were just missing a couple of things, nothing significant, and they're going to make available to us some other procedures for risk management, and a videotape, too. I'm not sure what contains it.
I think I would like to be on this Public Safety Facilities Committee if it's within the board.
All right.
Given that, I would certainly nominate...
Well, and, you know, we seem, certainly have, for a town our size, we have a very wide divergence. When you look at the names that are here, Charlie Kinicky, Jim Labree, who's a business owner, me, and I almost, maybe an engineer, I'm not sure, and Nilda Cohen, who's been on the School Building Committee before, and John Furman, who's a Mass employee, I think it's a good committee.
Yeah.
And Douglas Blanchard.
Yeah, no, I was on the Building Reuse, and I enjoyed it, and I really learned a lot. Every day you learn something.
Do we need to appoint Doug?
Well, we would appoint the five names plus Doug.
That's good.
Right, is it five or four?
I move to...
One, two, three, four.
Plus Doug.
Yeah.
I move to appoint the four said names for the Public Safety Facilities Committee, plus Doug Blanchard.
Is there a second?
I'll second to that.
Before we do that, does anybody have, need to talk to any of these people, or...
I have a question, if I may.
You may.
It's an important one. As the Selectman's representative in there, when I was the Selectman's representative on the Building Reuse Committee, I have full voting rights, and I would expect the same to represent the town.
I would also expect.
Mm-hmm.
When, we have seven positions, so there's room for two more, so if anybody comes forward but to get this thing off the ground...
Right, exactly. That's what I was thinking. I could, I could set up a meeting, and then folks might, you know, another two people would probably join in.
Yeah, all right. Is there, there's a motion, a second. Does anybody, did anybody want to talk to any of these people as an interview?
Somebody just talk about the mission, the mission of the Public Safety Facilities Committee?
Well, to decide whether or not one is necessary, where and what would be required of the facility, and where, if possible, it could be located. I mean, it's just a very broad at this point in time.
That pretty much sums it up. Yeah, we have on the charge, basically, what he said, identify the needs, identify a location, and, you know, explore town on land, not town on land, other sites it might be, and then come up with recommendations to the board.
And are we speaking about certain entities, the fire?
Fire police primarily, although we have talked about including the Highway Department and seeing if we want to do any kind of shuffling.
I asked, Ed, there's five acres there that they have on the highway, so whether or not there's room to shoehorn everybody in onto one site, or that's impractical, or...
Seven, yeah, seven tiers would be pretty good.
Seven people.
Yeah, because it is something you have absenteeism implications and that sort of thing. And as long as we have a forum, it's good. I was just advised if I may, Mr. Chair, by one of our colleagues here, that Mr. McDougal would like to be on this committee. Am I correct, sir?
Yeah.
I would like to nominate him if I may.
As number six? Well, at this, the problem with that, at this point in time, now we put two Select Board members on there. Yeah, but this is...
It's okay if we fight here or there, it doesn't make any difference.
No, I know. But I, I would have, I think at this point in time, it would be wiser not to have two Select Board members on there. And then, you know... As of now? And then, if something changes?
Sure.
There's a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oh, yeah, you can vote.
What?
Because you're pointing yourself. You're pointing yourself, you have to abstain.
I was just singing. Ay, 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 ay. Cantando de lloros.
I'll call for that vote again to eliminate the singing contest. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Mr. Blanchard abstains.
Excellent. Thank you very much. The Finance Committee will be down momentarily.
They're walking in as we speak. And have you found the proverbial pot of gold that's in the Old Town Hall basement?
And I'd just remind you that you guys have some PCFs and whatnot to give the board.
Do we want to bring up our points about these first, or just...
If you're not going to sign them, I would explain.
We did sign them.
You did sign them, okay? Then it's entirely...
Under duress? Well, the question wasn't so much under duress, it's just that one of these, actually two of these, sorry, two of these involved in the building inspector, and our question about that was, is it necessary that they have that level of clerical help? Because since we're filling an open position in a situation where the budgets are very tight, are we certain that this is neat to the degree that these forms are asking? Nine hours, the building inspector, nine hours for board health. And so, our question is, yes, we signed that, that they can go ahead and post the position, but you have to sign them, too, so we thought we would just share what people are thinking. And our thinking is, you know, should we, or could we maybe meet with these department heads again before we actually hire somebody and say, tell us again what it is that these people do that, you know, is there some flexibility in this? Maybe we can adjust this downward, if it's possible, because we're trying to adjust a lot of these downward to try to make a budget work for this town. So, we thought we would just pass it on to you since you're the next signature needed. My suggestion is, I think that's an excellent idea, but the easiest thing to do is not to sign these so that nothing goes forward, instead of saying not to hire somebody, which sometimes gets lost in the... Well, this stage is just to post it, not to hire anybody. And we all understand that... They get away from us at a time. You know, frankly, I've seen too many of these where we find out we've got an employee before we've ever signed. If we're going to do it, then let's stop it here, and technically, they can't post it, and we can hold it back, and we can get a handle on it before it gets posted. Okay, well, that means now that you don't sign it. That's my point, exactly.
So, Mr. Chair, would we need input from the PQB on this as well?
Well, they've signed it. Again, there, there's different, the boards have different responsibilities. There's this technically correct format as the PQB. Then it goes to Finance to make sure the money's there, and then it comes to us as the final persons of hiring.
Right.
So, PQB really just, you know, the job's been posted, it's been scored, it's got an appropriate salary range, that sort of thing. Then it goes to Finance to say, we can afford this, or we can't afford this. And what we're expressing for concerns is just the five, the reason not, for us not to have signed it. The fact that we did is saying, we're letting this process go forward, but what we're trying to say right now is, with reservations, and we want to share it with you because you're the other final line of... You want time to reexamine the positions with the boards? Yeah.
So, April 5th, there's a boards meeting, right? The departments will be meeting?
Well, my suggestion would be, based on what they're saying, is that we don't sign these, and we ask sometime when you're going to be with us to have these two departments come in and justify the positions. Is that, is that what we're trying to do?
Yeah, finally, that.
So, I would accept the motion to table the two personal PRF forms for Board of Health and Building Inspector.
So moved.
Is there a second?
A second, Ed.
And for further discussion, these are relatively new positions. I don't remember how long they've been, but...
About two years.
About two years. So, I mean, up until two years ago, they got along without these positions. So, just if that satisfies, all in favor?
Aye.
So, you'll note that those are tabled, Diana?
Yes, and I will ask that the Building Inspector and Board of Health Representatives be on the agenda for four or five during our Department Head meeting.
And are you, are you coming to our meeting on four or five?
Yes. Yeah, because we have a joint meeting with the Capital Improvement Committee and Finance Committee, and...
So, before we go on to the rest of yours, I'd like to handle the rest of these and get this off our table so that we can talk to you, if you don't mind. We have Angela Mumbolo's resignation for personal change. Is it twice with different signatures, I think? Same, it's basically the same thing. I was confused whether it was resignation first from Building Inspector and then resignation from Board of Health.
Could be.
Oh, that's why, that's...
She gets better time.
That's right. Not clear, though, on the forms that one is Building Inspector, yes. Only one of them is signed by Maureen Groden, who would be Board of Health, which should be... The other one must be, so, and then there's an overall resignation letter here anyway. So, do we want to accept Angela Mumbolo's resignation, effective March 10? All in favor?
Aye.
And then, we have a PCF for Jennifer Peliquin, who is coming in as an emergency hire at the same rate Jennifer had when she left, and this is an emergency hire, which, if I remember, gives, I forget how many weeks, nine weeks or, it's a limited number of weeks that this is an approval for. And they're going to run into problems with funding, as you probably... I thought that was the same rate that was established there. But the line item is going to be a problem because the current, they're paying out 75% of the current line item to the existing...
Ability.
So, there's only 25% left to pay this person, plus whatever, so there's going to have to be a transfer at some point in time.
Yes. And in fact, when, when the current Council on Aging Director started, Jen was still working, so they also overlapped at that point, too. So, the account was already behind when this started.
So, there's, how much, I'm not sure, but there, for you fellows, there's going to be a shortage.
About 25 to 30% right now.
Now, plus the 50...
With that.
With this.
Yeah, well, depending on the extent of it, but...
So, I mean, I don't think we have a choice but to hire Jennifer back.
I agree, because we're required by law to provide counsel on aging.
Right, but just so you know, they're still getting tagged for 75% of that line item. Any...
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve?
Second, Ed.
All in favor?
Mr. Chair, in regard to Angela Mumbolo, I'd like to, the Board of Selectmen, on behalf of the town, send her a letter of thanks for her services.
Second, Ed.
All in favor?
Aye.
Then we go on to budgets. A favorite of favors. That's time of year. How we doing?
Budgeting here?
We, we've been trying hard to get projected revenue for 2012, and we've got a lot of it, but we still don't have it all. Who's not sending it in? Because we sent out a second letter asking for it. Yeah, well, the biggest category is the first category, which has to do with all the real estate, which is obviously the big number, personal property, real estate, tax lien, motor vehicle excise, that kind of stuff. So, that whole first section, we still need attention to. We don't have any numbers for that. And we pretty much have the other categories filled in. Just for clarity, we don't have anything that lets us know what the first section is or what isn't? Okay, well, the first section is called taxes and excise. Do we, we don't have...
Did you, did you...
We mean the thing that we sent out together? You have a copy of the original? Oh, okay. We sent it out together, and we're going to have to... I don't know if we actually have a copy of it, but...
Yeah, I don't know that you need. It's basically a mimic of the revenue sheet that you see.
And, oh...
So, it's basically all the, all the property taxes, information.
So, it's which department?
It's excise. It's, it's not really a department. I mean, I mean Chrissy's department actually does the processing of it, but when it comes to the revenue projections, David and I do those primarily. But it, we really, or at this point, I mean, can't really do it yet, because we don't have any information. We don't have enough information to make, to make projections at this point. We don't have a new growth number, we don't have, you know, the commitments for excise, they don't, they're not, they're, they come out later in the year, so, you know, we can, our estimate for that is basically going to be based on last year's at this point.
Well, last year, we had, we overestimated our excise, so I would assume we've dampened that down to something more close.
I think we did dampen it down for FY11. FY10, we had overestimated, I believe, but, but I did do, you know, I did do it as of now, and, I mean, we're, I think we had 673 in the budget, and we've collected, I think, 653 as of now, or something. And we were pretty close to collections at this point. Actually, I can tell you.
I don't know what you mean.
Yeah. So, I mean, what we do generally is look at that, and then if we feel like we're, our projection is pretty close, then we would use the same numbers last year. But that's, that's the closest that we can get. But let me, let me look at my budget for a second.
Didn't mean to sidetrack you, but... Well, that's, that was the first topic. I mean, and I'm not saying it's, you know, somebody held us up, I'm just saying that we can't really recommend a budget if we could be off by $180,000, which we easily could be off, because this category adds up to $9.5 million. We could be off by $400,000 if we just use our own estimates. We really need them from the people who are best able to fill in this category, even though we realize that, you know, it's a guesstimate. But normally, we would try to make a conservative, but still one that allows us to spend more money if we really think we have more money. And clearly, real estate, it's going to be higher, right? We can raise it two and a half a cent, we know that. But there are other factors in coming up with that number, and we're not experts at by any means. So, that's why I would, that's the category that in terms of trying to make the recommended budget without knowing within a reasonable range what revenues we have to work with is pretty difficult. What steps do we take from here? Well, we wait. I mean, we've been asking, so it's not like, you know, the people don't know that we're hoping that this will come in sooner rather than later, but it's not up to us to come and tally up every day.
I think right now, I mean, the best way to complete it is to use last year's numbers, because we never...
Even with real estate?
Well, well, with real estate, you actually take, there's a formula that you don't have on your sheet that's on this revenue sheet. This is the formula that you have to use to get the number. It's actually last year's base, what we came up with from last year's property tax, then you can add two and a half, as you said, plus you add new growth, and then that's how you come up with these numbers. So, there's a formula here that you can run through based on last year, and that's...
We have a formula, a month or so ago, when we filled in our own categories, and we did the best we could with it, but we're fearful that if we use the number we did, because we're the Finance Committee, not the treasurer, the life guard, or the town accountant, that we could be way off. So, we would rather have somebody else also run that formula, and then we can look at that number and compare it to ours, and we'll probably use what we get from the people that work in this building, rather than us trying to juggle that formula and... But I, in the last few years, we've gone to town meeting without a balanced budget. So, I don't know... Last two or three.
Last year, we went with a balanced budget.
We had a balance? Why would we have to go back and...
We did, but we had a couple of changes after we balanced.
Right.
We did go with a balanced budget.
The year before, we were relying on future pre-cash, and we knew it. But last year, we didn't do that. We balanced with what we had last year.
Right.
And with, you know, with some changes, like regional schools came in, we had to come up with more money for regional school, that kind of thing. Well, I think we underfunded the regional, yeah, we underfunded the regional, and... And we ended up in fifth place, so we knew we had to...
Fifth place.
Anyway, on the revenue side, again, it's eight and a half million dollars. That's why it's an important number for us to say, is it going to be $9 million? Is it going to be $8.75 million? We're talking hundreds of thousand dollars differences that we really would like help with that number, even if we leveled on the rest of it. That one particular number is, we don't want to be the people who are, have the final say on this is what we're going to fill this in with. We're looking for help. So, that's, and everybody knows that, I'm fascinated about that already. So, we're just waiting until somebody says to us, this is what I would put in for that number. So, on revenue, that's the one that we are having trouble cracking, and we're nervous
Fifth place.
Anyway, on the revenue side again, it, it's eight and a half million dollars. That's why it's an important number for us to say, is it going to be nine million dollars? Is it going to be eight point seven five million dollars? We're talking hundreds of thousand dollars differences that we really would like help with that number, even if we leveled on the rest of it. That one particular number is, we don't want to be the people who are the, have the final say on this is what we're going to fill this in with. We're looking for help. So that's, and everybody knows that. I've asked David about that already. So we're, we're just waiting until somebody says to us, this is what I would put in for that number. So on revenue, that's the one that we are having trouble cracking, and we're nervous about being the only ones who are trying to fill it in, or not trying, but feel the need right now to fill it in.
So David, you could, you could use that formula and get a figure, probably?
I'm studying this.
I see you're studying. I, I would be comfortable just giving the finance committee that. I mean, David's not going to.
I have no excuse.
Well, you're, I know you're not, but I think that.
What is your number on there?
The fiscal twelve calculation?
That's, that's a revenue calculation. The first section is the formula based on, I also put in the actuals for FY ten, so you can look at those too.
So where's the number I'm looking for?
Well, you're looking at, so you're, you're doing it a little bit differently on the first page.
Oh, good, that's better.
This is, this is the bottom line number that you're looking at. See, it's mixed up a little different because this is just your real estate and personal property. Then these are all your other taxes and excises.
Yeah, okay.
And these I also did, you know, I just did this based on last year, like you said, level funded. But here's your, here's your new number for, for FY ten.
Okay.
Okay? And then these still, David and I will revisit these, and this number never comes in until later.
Well, are you saying that that number that you circled? Well, I'll compare these with.
Yeah, compare them because they're not, yeah, they're not exactly, Bob, but you'll see when you look at it what's what.
I love the lot, thank you.
You know, does that number come up any close, where close to what your number was?
The one I just, the one I just circled.
They match up. Our number is buried in the back here, and it was around nine million.
Yeah, that's about nine million.
This is nine million, eleven thousand.
So it's close.
David, do you know that, Chris?
Yep.
We found a, a more digital.
Sure.
More, actually, too, that I'm looking for again.
Is the wage lines, and, you know, we've done different things over the last couple of years, but our biggest question is, we know that there are signed contracts for wage increases out there. Do we start proceeding assuming that we can only afford the wage amount that was in the previous year, and that department heads have to figure out how to give their raises within a level funded wage budget? Or do we want to start talking about trying to add money to the wage lines so that there will take some of that pressure off department heads?
You know, I don't, I don't know. I always have trouble because the tendency is to put money in the wage lines and take it out of the expense lines, and then we end up with cruisers that don't patrol because there's no gas for the, gas for the lines, or, you know. In the past, I think to a great extent, we have sacrificed expense numbers to keep people employed.
Correct.
But that doesn't serve us well to have people who are employed but can't really do their job because there's no money to buy paper or whatever.
Well, that was the stance that everybody took last year. And we actually increased some of the expense lines last year and tried to hold the line on the wage lines, and that ended up being in a lot of different places. Finally, the last place was the December special town meeting where, you know, some increases were voted. But, but at this stage of the game last year, I think the stance was, we aren't going to increase those wage lines. And that if you have a contract that says you have to give a two percent wage increase to your employees or a three and a half percent wage increase, you have to figure it out as a department head.
I think at this point in time, is there, are there any, Diane, are there any contractors, contracts calling for more than one or one and a half percent?
Three percent to the town employees.
That's non-union town employees. I'm saying, I mean, we have three union con, basically three union.
None of them eclipse three percent.
But I think some, I think, I think at this point in time, we're all down to one or one and a half.
Well, except I think the highways, and it's last year, and I think they're at three point seven five.
Three point seven five?
Yeah, I think that's right.
The police were at one.
One. You know, my thought was, and I advocated it last year, I may start advocating it this year, that we give a flat across the board, non-union employee raise as opposed to, you know, saying zero or something like that, but a one percent or something like that. We've got to get away from giving three point seven five percent raises because we, every year, it's a fallacy. If you can only raise taxes by two and a half, what are you doing giving three point seven five? Where's it going to come from?
Correct.
It's simple math, but you can't give more than two and a half.
But last year, didn't we end up giving three percent?
The, the non-union employees got three percent. So I, whether we'd be better off this year going in with a, something of one percent, two percent, something.
That's the question. And, and I think what we're asking is not, is, is less hard to answer because what, what we'd like to do is do one first budget. And the quicker we can do it, the quicker we can bring it and talk about it. And of course, Diane has been doing it for a whole bunch of years in a row, but she may already have hers done, because she's the, she's the one that's always appealing. For us to come on and present our recommended budget is something that hasn't been done for three or four or five years. So it's been challenging for us because we're trying sort of breaking ground and get people to help us do it who aren't used to helping us. So that's, you know, we're changing the ground rules somewhat, but we want to come up with a first budget, something we can talk about, hammer away at, and it'll lead to the second budget, and it'll lead maybe to the third budget, and then we're going to have an open hearing with all the department heads, and we're all going to talk about that budget because now we're going to be close to the town meeting. So we're looking for some help from you in terms of what you would suggest we look at the first time through for the wage lines. Should we just put them all level? Should we consider giving in the wage lines a one percent increase? Because we know that certain departments, like highway, where they've got to figure out how to make their wage budget work with a three and three quarters percent increase in salary for each of the employees, that's going to be, you know, a challenge to do. But that's, we're just asking what your opinion is.
Well, then I go off to the board. How do you want to handle it?
Yeah, I would support your idea of starting with a one percent in non-union.
Well, one and a half to all, I think Bob's suggesting.
I was suggesting to the regular town departments, highway, fire.
They make up the balance on their own.
Police, non-union.
Yeah, non-union, right.
No, but everybody. Were you saying everybody including?
I said highway, police, fire.
Union, union contract.
Not who I left out.
But union contracts included.
There, I mean, there are other people I left out. I mean.
But union contracts included.
Yes.
And then they just work out.
They work out the shortage.
Whatever their wage and their.
And they have to figure out within that budget how to give the raises that have been negotiated, knowing we know that that'll be.
But we increase the wage letter line by some percentage, and then they have to figure out the balance.
May I say something?
Yes.
And I'm not a finance person, please forgive me. If we continue to do this, let's say we tell them, okay, you're going to get a percent and a half towards wages, and they have three percent wages, they've got to take money out of other pots that are probably very essential for them to operate in an efficient manner. If we continue to do this, how can, how can we expect them to manage a decent department? Let's say highway, they don't have money for gas or for ask.
But they can't take money from the expense account and put it into a wage account. They, whatever they get for expenses, it has to be spent on expenses. The hard part, let's say if we're talking highway department, will be, how do I pay the employees for a whole year's worth of work? I'm going to have to furlough somebody. I'm going to have to do something, you know, in, within just the wage account, because that's where my shortfalls can come. My expense account, I'm going to be able to spend whatever they give me. I can't transfer from one to the other.
Which is what the highway, for instance, highway did because they had an employee leave. They didn't replace them, they operated with fewer people.
That's how they got through this year.
They got through the years, they fought, you know, they, creative or not, he did not hire somebody for three or four months.
Yeah, long enough, so that.
So that he made up his, his.
It, it does seem like a cleaner kind of simple focus to do everybody, non-union and union, and just lay it out there, because we had such a difficult time last go around. People feeling.
And that, just again, allowing to do a first budget, and it made me way out of whack, which means we have to go back and do something different again. But I, I feel like, you know, there's enough reason to be semi-optimistic that we might try to achieve that, some smaller percentage, not three for everybody, because we know we can do that. But something that doesn't say zero, as an attempt to see if we can come up with a revenue side and an expenditure side that look like they're close. And again, that's when the real experts on the revenue side weigh in and say, I think the revenue side looks pretty good, and if your expenditure side is this, I really think we can fund it, or not.
Do we, do we have a number in town that represents all of the wages combined if we took everybody's wage lines and said they equal something?
No, but we could if we do this budget.
Well, that's what I'm saying, because then we'd know what one percent really looks like. If one percent wipes out all your new growth and your two and a half percent, then.
Yeah. Because we have other goals, too, that we haven't talked about, but we've been talking about in recent years, we've got to rebuild the stabilization fund, and we've got to have the operating stabilization fund, which is a newer one. It's got, it's got, it's started growing because it's been sitting at virtually nothing for a long time. And that still is a big need, so that requires funding as well.
Could I just?
That's another question.
Add one thing to what you're saying about the grand total. That actually is on Schedule A. It's the grand total of the general fund payroll.
You, you know a number for that?
With me, but yes.
Yeah, but you haven't. Okay, well, then one percent on top of the number.
Yeah, then we can, then we know what the real number is.
Yeah.
All right, so it becomes the question to, from you to us, is what we're in favor of.
Do you have a suggestion for us, is our question? We're not asking to vote necessarily, we're just looking for guidance on our first run through, and the sooner we can do a first run through, the sooner we have something to all talk about.
Well, I'd, I'd rather talk, come to some sort of consensus or vote so that we give a, speak with a unified voice to you to, to do it.
I'd like to recommend that we ask the finance committee to do two quick run-throughs, one at one percent and one at one point five percent.
Yeah, that's what I was going to say.
I have.
Overall wages from Schedule A.
Or do you want to do one and, or go through with one and then go through with two?
Because this is just an Excel spreadsheet, isn't it?
We could, yeah, I mean.
One, one and a half and two.
Change it to.
Yeah.
So we could put whatever you want. We were just looking for, well, a range of three hours.
That's the old days, lotus one, two, three.
Jim, it'll just take you two seconds.
One and a half and two. Does that ring, Mr. Chair?
I, if you wanted to, I, I certainly could agree with that.
That's my motion, is we ask the finance.
One, one and a half and two, but not to exceed two.
Right.
Second?
Well, we'll do it by consensus tonight. That's where we are. One to two.
Derek, I can, I have a spreadsheet that already has those numbers because we did it that way last year too, so I can send you that.
Yeah, anything you can send us, that'd be great.
But this year, we have to stick to our plans. We can't go all of a sudden to town meeting.
Please, I think, didn't I say that last year?
I know. What happened?
That's why we go to, we go to town meeting with a balanced budget and not go back with another budget later on, because that's where we got into trouble last year. I learned my lesson.
Oh, my God, that was a disaster.
There is no, there is no special town meeting in December next year. Because that's where we, that's where we lost it last year, is at a special town meeting in December. We cannot go, this budget has to be hard and firm when we pass it and that.
Sure you want me to send a memo to the state about that? Our budget must be hard and fast. We cannot change our numbers.
And your budget must be hard.
I think most of them, the other day, except I did it for my own community.
Is that a motion or something? Yeah, we just need to vote.
Well, I think we, everybody seems to be in agreement, so I, I'll take a motion if you want.
Well, I move that we ask the finance committee to do one, one and a half and two.
Is there a second?
A second.
And are all in favor?
Aye.
So we speak with one voice.
Yeah. Mr. Chair, I, I have a question. I had to leave briefly.
Yes.
Are we lacking information from some committees or?
They tell us no. They say they're missing some information, but it's the information that hasn't been generated yet and should be available within the next few weeks. And we actually got some tonight.
We don't have every budget, I don't think, but the ones we don't have are, I mean, a smaller number, and our feeling about those is we just put the numbers in ourselves. Maybe we don't have one, so somebody will just kind of.
That certainly was the past practice when I was planning board. If we didn't get our budget in in time, they just gave us a number.
Right. And that's what we're doing.
For, for our eight hundred and fifty dollars, which I think is still a planning board budget.
Yeah, they're supported, they're funded.
Anything else, Senator?
Bob, did you want to talk a little, or can we talk a little bit about the next three to four weeks and what the plan is to get to the hearing and town meeting? Just so we're all aware of the timeframe.
Good idea.
So the four, there's four meetings in April, the fifth, the twelfth, the nineteenth, and the twenty-sixth.
So within those four meetings, we have to have a town, but, well, when's, when's town meeting?
Town meeting is May, May seventeenth.
So we have one meeting.
And, and we really should ideally, I mean, we could push the budget hearing to the third, but if we could have it on the twenty-sixth, that would be more ideal.
Why, why can't we have a, why, twenty, oh, twenty-sixth.
April twenty-sixth, yeah, which means that you only have three meetings to really finish the budget and then have the hearing on the twenty-sixth.
Is that practical?
Well, I'm, I'm not the technical person on the committee. I could sit there by myself in many hours and put up together a one and a one and a half percent budget, but if Garrett can do it in a couple of seconds, then I'm going to defer to him. And I would hope that we could have some kind of budget to talk about next week.
Oh, that's fine. Because we have.
Am I way off track to say that?
Now, we have.
We're going to watch, I just have it on the deadline. Yeah, we're going to shoot for next week.
Because we have, is department head meetings next week?
Yes.
So would you gentlemen like to stay with us as we meet with department heads and we'll have department heads here to discuss budgets if, you know, throw in their two cents for budgets? Or you think that's inappropriate?
I don't think it's inappropriate, I just don't know if that first run-through is the one we want to have people reacting to, until we get a chance to see, you know, I wouldn't let David see it, I definitely want Diana to see it and you folks to see it, because basically what we're looking at is the total over here and how it matches up with the total over there, because these are expenditures and these are revenue, you know, how do they get? And the C I C, is that next week?
Yes. We, we definitely have on the agenda specifically to meet with the capital improvement committee because they have already met and identified their FY twelve plan.
Because we don't know that, but that requires, those are expenditures, so that's going to be added on to what we bring. So I think that saying next week, let's have all the department heads, or let's do it with all the department heads, so they can all get a copy of this, and they can all look and stuff and say, wait a minute, look what you did to my expense account. I mean, it's too early for that, I think. I mean, we, we know that that day has to come, but not, probably not next week.
All right.
So maybe the week after that, the 12th?
Well, I mean, we're going to, we're shooting for a budget hearing on April 26th.
That's right. Yeah.
That's when the department heads are going to have their chance to put their two cents worth in.
Right.
If they want to sit in on any of these other meetings, fine.
Exactly.
But to call it a department head joint, finance committee joint, board selectman meeting, I'm not sure I'm comfortable with that because I feel like it's going to be a lot of talking and not moving forward.
All right. Just a question. So we'll go on from there.
And, and next week, we also have, um, we've asked the, well, the assessors have asked to come in about the mileage follow-up. So that is a financial issue if the finance committee is here. And we do have, um, we put on our ESCO, our energy audit. We're moving into the next stage of our investment grade audit and we're going to ask the selectmen to sign the agreement next week. But we'd like, the energy committee had asked if, if they could do it while the finance committee and the capital improvement committee are here because those groups are also, you know, this is a big capital project that will be, need to be, have, have it funded. And, um, I mean, it's a special process, but we're going to have our owner's agent here. So she's going to explain all of that to both groups, to the capital improvement and finance. So you'll have a sense of, you know, how that's going to look as we move on.
That's all next week?
Yeah.
Yeah, well, next week's the...
Do you have a time for when all that begins?
Uh, we had that as our main focus of the agenda, so I assume it would start shortly after seven.
Do you have anything you want to ask us to prepare for next week? Anything that we have to talk about?
The capital, um...
Is that, anybody, anybody got a grip on the status of Winter Roads account?
The Winter Roads account right now is over expended by 46,000, 46,485.
So we're in a state of emergency now, worse for two months now. Let's simply declare that, which allows them to go over that, that budget for Winter Roads.
And you got one more shot at it Friday.
Friday.
If it...
No, actually, I don't think, isn't it Winter Roads? Doesn't that end April 1st? I think, we don't do it by the actual events. We do it by a time period.
So it's over on April?
I, I believe it's over on May 3rd.
How are we going to plow roads on April 1st if the...
Good, good question. Maybe that, I, I'm not sure. That's my understanding of how it works.
Well, hopefully it goes south and we don't get it, but on April 1st, we had a blizzard on April 1st 10 years ago.
We did, 1997, I think. Yeah. I'm not sure.
We must have plowed it somehow.
Sure got plowed, but what are you going to talk to is the question.
All right, but anyway, so we're 40,000 overdrawn on that.
It's all right, we can go right now, but...
And we are probably, we have, the, the police department has our extra officer, um, which proves to be fortuitous since they're down an officer now, so...
Oh, really?
Medical disability.
Ed was working on a disaster in iteration at which we had...
Some of that, some of those storms early on.
About 30,000.
Yeah, I don't know what happened to that. I don't know where we are. Yeah, I remember he did mention. So, I mean, we've got some extras.
Well, FY11 still has issues for sure. We don't have much free cash to fall back on. We have the reserve fund. We're hoping for some budgets that don't spend all their money that will be able to kick back something and we can do some transfers at the end. But we've got a major problem just to start with for Winter Roads, right? And all ready 46 and how can count you?
Which me, which I guess when, when we do this, I've always advocated that we should have a five-year rolling average on that account anyway. Why, I mean, we've been coming up over the years. When I first came on the board, I think it was like 10 or 15,000 dollars was allocated to Winter Roads and then we just used to spend it. But it's, it's foolish to think that you're not really spending real money. We should come up with a, a rolling five-year average number that is somewhat realistic as to what you're really going to spend.
Was it two years ago that we upped it?
Yes.
And if it were possible to up it again, you know, not all the way to 146, but maybe to 120 or something.
That's one, one of those we need to, we need to tackle with our little bit of 1% money.
No, because we always come short.
Anything else, Senator?
No.
Thank you.
Great.
Thanks very much, guys.
All right.
Did we answer all your questions?
Keep feeding the turkeys.
Keep feeding the turkeys.
Thank you, gentlemen.
See you next week.
Yeah.
Diana, the only thing we skipped over so far is town administrators' report.
We read your one page.
We read, that's it?
Yeah, that's all I had. Yes.
All right, then we're, we're moving on. And we have an executive session to discuss MGL Chapter 30A, Section 21, Number 2, Contracts.
Good night, George.
We will not be going into executive, or back into regular session when we're complete.
And you need a roll...